Okay, very good. So it is October 20th, 2025, just after 5 o'clock. We do have two items on our city council workshop tonight. So economic development, presentation regarding On Point EV Solutions. And after that, the University of Idaho Extension regarding the Senior Produce Program. So we'll begin with our economic development. And Mr. Jenkins, are you gonna kick it off for us?
Oh, yeah.
Very good.
I'm Mayor Conover. We're your patients that sent things up online, but just wanted to introduce you all to On Point EV Solutions. My team and I reached out to this group.
Regarding charging systems that they have available. We always look for different ways to amenitize our community for our visitors and our citizens. And these chargers being level three chargers were, we felt would be something to consider. We had recognized them first through their partnership with Jackson's Food Stores. And then secondarily, we realized that they had a couple municipalities that they partnered with. Sugar Land, Texas, and Missouri City, Texas are two cities that we had acknowledged as partners there. So we wanted to explore and understand it better. So we've had a few meetings with this group, and I felt like it should be presented to you all before we got too far, just to make sure that there was a level of alignment with this governing body and the services that they're providing. And I know Chris Graham from On Point EV Solutions is online with us. I just wanted you all to know that we had been in touch with them since March of this year. Again, we've had some good meetings with them, but didn't want to get too far ahead of ourselves before we presented this information to you all. So that's our intent tonight. With that, I will allow Chris Graham to take over and share more about On Point, and I'll stand by for questions that you may have.
Okay, very good. Chris, are you there? Can you hear us? He is not online yet.
Okay. I'm gonna reach out to him. Stand by.
Okay, yep, no problem at all.
Nice.
Okay, Mr. Graham, we can see you. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Beautiful. Thank you.
You bet. Yes, we can. The time is yours for your presentation.
Awesome. Excellent. Well, thank you, everybody, for your time. I greatly appreciate it. Oh, wow, I can see myself on screen. Awesome. Let's go through. So what we're trying to propose here is the value proposition for the city of Caldwell is we'd like to provide the following: From DC level three fast charging as a service for EV drivers that would be passing or visiting the city of Caldwell. A site license agreement that's gonna pay $215 per parking space per month after a nine-month ramp-up with an additional 10% revenue share on the net operating income of the EV charging stations over a 10-year site license agreement. Once we, of course, achieve an 8% utilization rate. With that, the potential revenue on that passive year income per location, per parking space, depending upon the number of chargers deployed, could be $30,000 to $50,000 per year. The benefits from this are that no capital outlet at the city of Caldwell. So the average capital investment per site is about 1.3. Depending upon how large a site goes, we've had some that are larger, but that's about your average. And we would obviously try and pick advantage of any city grants or any infrastructure grants that might be available or incentives that could help offset any capital investment. How we do that? So we have our program team, which is, we as On Point are the main entity of this. We also then have Up Time Charger. We have Income Power, 3V3I, Argen Associates, and Influent to ultimately help us pull all of this together and be able to deliver this nicely. Who we basically are and go through all the, this is a lot, this is wordy. I'm not gonna go through this entire thing, but you can ultimately see here what we do. We're a charge point operator. We have national EV charging hubs throughout the United States. And we have developed a service as a company, which ultimately is built on the, you know, strengths of all of the leading engineering and procurement and construction companies, you know, who have ultimately deployed thousands of EV charging stations across the United States. What we ultimately do is begin the journey with the city of Caldwell by selecting the right locations and deploying DCFC faster than. Our solution, our canopy, DCFC up to 400 kilowatts with dual connector dispenser, which are agnostic. You would have multiple different connector types up. We can configure it to meet the needs of most of the drivers in the area. We have a mobile app, managed Wi-Fi. Deliver, you know, a much more amenity risk than just your typical charging site. We like to create these as kind of more like an open system than just an EV charging. Ultimately, how we do that, as you could see here, with this really great double-checker flag. We start off with the site evaluation, and we go through charger procurement, site planning, permanent acquisition, construction, installation, and commissioning, and monitoring, maintenance throughout the life of the term. Over 1,000 site-wide EVs with nationwide electricity. So any, you can have a team mobilize very quickly. And we have decades of experience in EV charging infrastructure. I myself have seven and a half, so a pretty significant amount of time. We work with multitude of different brands. You could see charging station manufacturers down there. We're pretty agnostic to them. Moving to the next slide. Ultimately, the roles and responsibilities. Back one more. Sorry, my mistake. Yeah, ultimately, these are the roles and responsibilities of all the different entities that would be responsible of actually deploying the charging station project. We would work through procurement, design, permitting, construction, filler, and grants. And these are all the different entities that I'll give back. As you could see, we work primarily with uptime throughout this, and uptime has a service-level agreement, keeping a 97% uptime on the charging stations. So we know that they're always gonna be available. At one of the biggest concerns right now is going up to stations that just, you know, broken screen, start working, you know. We take that into consideration off of making sure we partner with the company that was going to and are in good working order. Levy drivers as well, so, you know, it's really important to us to be utilized. Next slide. Thank you. This is what an ideal, typical project timeline looks like. You know, from the time we get the host framework agreement in place, we then go ahead and get you committed. What we would then do is ultimately secure the $10 million in funds for whatever different sites that we would ultimately be deploying on. We would then begin the engineering for the site, move through the permitting process, and then about, you know, month four, we've ordered underground services and site. You know, month five through six, then commissioning, turning it on and making it accessible to the public. Some of these we don't have to necessarily, go real quickly through this one. We're looking at these typical, sorry, next slide. There you go. Thank you. Jim, for looking at a 400 kilowatt, two dispensers, or a number of different, multitude of different types, as the drivers out there haven't really accepted a standard. The typical standard is the Tesla, all the weeds or semantics of it. It's kind of like USB, Apple, Android, and Type-C, type-D, all this stuff. It's a big war out there. I think eventually it's gonna get, you know, ultimately that's what it's gonna be. Next slide. So this is a typical layout of our Type A, and these are indicative of the solar canopy. We're looking at a site like this, what I'm, we're typically looking at quartz or eight pates on what we are desired, but we found that, you know, typical crawl and strategy works better. Smaller, and then toward something. We always build the sites with scale a little. We're making sure that we're upsized when the time comes. And you'll see by some of the choices that we've made here, working with like prefabricated solutions, enabled solutions. One of the things that I've encountered with these EV charging sites, they can go to phone, obsolete in a short period of time, typically four to five years. We've actually built in the ability to scale the sites and be able to remove the charging station and then put a new charging station on with minimal disruption. This is also gonna help with the city because this is having to require new permitting and things along that nature as we're tapping into existing infrastructure. So, you know, it makes things a little smoother. Next slide.
Go back a couple.
Why, you guys want me to go? Just want me to get out of here, huh? Okay.
Can you go back a couple? I think we skipped two or three.
Yeah, it's backwards. Thank you. And probably five now.
Go back.
There we go. One more. Here we go. There we go. Perfect. Awesome. Thank you. I'll be quick, I promise. No more skipping my slide. Networking security and lighting. We're gonna have these sites, they're securely monitored, right? Because vandal is an issue with these sites. So, we good? Okay, awesome. Sorry, Eric, somebody's talking. Apologies. So these would have what we call, it's smart lighting, the capability of doing some very unique things with the lighting. We can have the stall light up certain colors when it's occupied. If somebody knows, if we know that somebody's approaching, we can have it light up to illuminate the stall based on their motion and then coming in. There's a lot of different capabilities for us to do with this that allow us to make the, a little bit more feature-rich environment and feel safer for individuals who are gonna be charging there. Let's go to the next slide, please. We also have interactive digital displays onsite that allow the individuals to, should they want, to have the ability to find out about upcoming events or farmer's market. You know, find out about the city, like interesting events that might be going on, or the ability to talk about the upcoming pumpkin festival or things along that nature. It's an interactive display that also has games for kids. Wanna play games while the kid, the car, have them, you know, play around on the screen for a few minutes while they're charging. It has a lot of different capabilities as far as being able to play some music. And it is locked and restricted, so it's not something that you can just go out and start browsing around freely. It's a closed ecosystem, all kid-friendly environment. So these are kind of interesting. And most of the designs for all of the games and everything are designed at a lower area so the kids can reach them instead of at the higher area. Gives you a lot of different capabilities to kind of showcase your commitment to sustain the system, but then also, you know, broadcasting the upcoming events and things going on. Let's go to the next slide. So typical site selection, this is just an idea of how we go about selecting a site. This kind of gives you some insight as to how many charging stations are nearby. What does the current traffic look like? Are there individuals, we have some search filters that will ask to see how many people are searching for EV charging in a given area. So we get some pretty interesting data sets to kind of look at, you know, what the current area's infrastructure looks like and help us identify certain sites that'd be the most beneficial to drive traffic and be, you know, drive high utilization. Next slide, please. Oh, I didn't skip. Oh, sorry. No, that's good. So when we typically look at, whoa, that's fast. One more, I think, back. Yeah, there we go. So typically what we'll do is we'll look at, you know, how we evaluate the sites based on the five-mile radius that we're looking at here. You know, we really didn't see much existing infrastructure, just some EV goes that were out there. Let's go ahead and go to the. Here's where it gets a little bit more interesting, but these are mostly dealerships who are providing the service. So not necessarily available to the public, you know, or readily available to the public or something that they might necessarily look at. This, sure, there's a need for EV. And then there's definitely, could be high utilization rate as a result of the infrastructure being available. Typically, how the next slide, sorry, license framework and agreement. We would basically put, agreement with the city council, individual site license agreement. And next slide. Okay, so site engineering. We identified these different locations that would be sites, that would be quality sites where we think that there would. So the Executive Airport, the Caldwell Fairgrounds and Rodeo Grounds, the near Idaho State City Hall. These are all locations that we would recommend at least anywhere from four to eight parking spaces, typically four in most of these. And we would be doing something like a two, 360-watt kilowatt chargers with two dispensers. So giving you four parking spaces. And all the infrastructure would be underground, EV distribution, EV receptacles, and solar canopy. Six spaces total per all of this infrastructure. So we would ultimately be taking up six spaces to provide this. Next slide. So here's an example of the financial pro forma based on utilization rates, efficiency. You know, it's the upward trend driven primarily by the fact that EV adoption is only we're aware of, and becoming more and more, infrastructure is becoming more and more required and more of a necessity than just a luxury. So as you could see here, based on the estimated revenue per parking, it was slower, but as we begin to ramp in the years too, you can definitely see that the revenue per parking space jumps significantly. And the beautiful thing of this is we're gonna take all the heavy lifting, full of benefits, and additional revenue without having to, you know, bear for all the. Next slide.
Quick question on that last slide. Is that annual estimate per spot, the total amount?
Yeah, linear total revenue per space, yes.
Okay, on an annual basis.
Correct. Fixed revenue per, yes, on an annual basis. Per year, per space. If you want, you can see at the very bottom of the key, fixed revenue per space, revenue share. And yes, it's an annual. All right. So next steps, which we kind of already did. We're up to about level three right now on steps. So we've identified a few of the EV capable and ready sites. Present the program to the city of Caldwell. Here we are. We're at step two right now already. Look at that, making progress. Step three is, we're gonna go ahead and go through the framework and license agreement with the city of Caldwell, and then beginning engineering design and cross-marketing. That's when we got the approval. I'm Chris Graham. I'm sorry, I may not have introduced myself earlier there. We had a, we had a little rocky start when we took off there on flight, but we got through the turbulence and we're great. It was a smooth flight. Beautiful landing, we got ready. I'm Chris Graham, presenting on behalf of Rusme and with On Point EV Solutions. We hope you appreciate our presentation. Any question?
Perfect. Thank you so much. Steve, anything you wanna add before we get into questions from council?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Thank you, Christopher, for sharing that information.
I know we're short on time, but from our point of view, we just look at opportunities we wanna put in front of you guys and see how you might evaluate it. We certainly wanna go on, again, alignment is key in our department, making sure that your ideas align with ours and just giving our citizens and visitors, you know, an avenue to explore this further. One thing I'll say is we do have charging stations in the community, none of which are at level three charging capacity, so, or ability, I should say. So that, these would be a lot quicker. Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, I think they're like a 20 to 60-minute, no, that's a wide gap, but range in terms of time. So our viewpoint from economic development's perspective was, you know, we'd be on, have another star on the map tied to Caldwell. You know, this would be an inviting situation for folks that are looking for these amenities across the valley. Of course, it's a quicker charging ability, but it also gives folks an opportunity to be introduced to the city in various ways, given the locations that we've identified here preliminarily. So this is all perspective, but I just want you guys to have a little bit of context based on how we were thinking about it.
Very good. Okay, questions, Councilor Doughty?
I have some. Thank you. So I'd rather see them in, if the council moves forward with it, in new parking spaces. I don't think that they're gonna be used at the extent, especially starting off, just to sit there and take up six parking spaces at some of our big events. We do see them around town. I've seen them at DMV Supply the most. I've never seen anyone use them. And I understand this is different. This would be people passing through, so I'm not lost on that. But to take up current parking spaces would cause me some concern versus pouring a slab and making additional parking spaces.
Councilor Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What are the charging stations at Flying J, Stephen? Are you aware of those and what level they are? They're brand new. It's a brand-new EV charging station there.
Yeah, and Mayor, you might have to help me out a little bit here, but I don't think, so those are the ones that, that were created as a result of the development there, near Flying J?
It's right at the Flying J, in the Flying J parking lot.
Oh, in the Flying J parking, okay.
In the Flying J parking lot.
So those are, those are charging stations that were appropriated for that development, for that project? Oftentimes, they're, from what I understand, they're private. You either have to have permission to use them, or they're just not accessible to the public.
No, I think we're talking about a different place then.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll have to, we'll have to do some research and find out because there is a brand-new public charging station there, and I have a feeling it's more than what we think it is.
Okay.
Somebody knows, I don't know if anybody here knows, how many electric cars are in the city of Caldwell without the ones passing through?
Chris, you might have a better idea of valley-wide. I know you and your team are looking at or assessing that number. Do you happen to have an idea, total-wise? Is Chris still online here?
Yeah, I'm still here. You guys got me?
Yep.
So it looks like when we looked at charging station locations, we noticed that there were 66 total locations within the given area. And that was within a state of Idaho, very close. Let me look up real quick and try and identify the, how the data here is. Give me a second. And then we have drivers. I can pull this up while you guys are, I don't know how the meeting up while I'm looking this up, but I can answer the questions as soon as I blow up. If you wanna carry on, for sake of time.
Did you have another question, Councilor Allgood? Or, sorry?
No, I just wanted to say, in addition, while you were looking at that, I, this is all new to me, and I'm gonna need some time to process before I greenlight this.
Councilor Allgood?
Yeah, for either you or Stephen, is there some concern that we're in direct competition with private parties that have EV stations, you know, like Councilor Doughty said? You have the DMVs, you have the Flying Js, you have, are, is this gonna put the city in some kind of competition where we're taking business from those places?
Yeah, good, good question. Yeah, no, those are all, those charger, charging stations that you see currently, like DMV Supply, for example. Supply, for example, were required based on the development there. So they wouldn't be like a public, you know, facing charging facility. These would be specialized from the standpoint of just being a lot faster and just more accessible to the public. So they wouldn't be in competition with...
Yeah, that's my concern, is we go and install EV stations in key locations, and we cut the use of people who've spent the money to put those in.
Sure, sure.
That's kind of what I was concerned about.
Yeah, and Chris, you might speak to that a little bit more about this, this amenity versus what is more standardized across cities that you all work with. You know, I know for us, we were looking at more of a high-speed amenity that they would provide. There's obviously a revenue sharing model that was shown as well, and there's some of those things, but yeah, you want to speak to the competition piece, Chris?
You're muted. We can't hear you.
There we go.
There we go.
So right now with the lack of infrastructure for EV charging, really, it's not a matter of competition. EV drivers are really just trying to find the charging stations at all. And so with that, any new charging station is very much welcome. It's not as if we're trying to take business from anybody else, providing the infrastructure is seen as a, an amenity that's to attract and retain. So it really is, it'll bring individuals to the area more than it's seen as a cannibalization of market share.
Okay, thank you.
And that, yeah, no problem. And I'm pulling that data up right now, so it's taking a second, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and it looks like, so there's, we have a few set level two charging stations around the city. That's what, like at DMB and things like that, which is, those are free, for what I know on those. So those are kind of the slower chart, faster than like a level one that you plug into the wall, the level two does like a, takes a four to eight hour depending, and then these ones, level three, are the ultra-fast ones. But Counselor Williams was able to look up, looks like there was four level three chargers installed at the Flying J recently, and I'm not sure how recent, but it looks like there's some out there. Counselor Stotick, and then Counselor Register?
I was just curious about the marking into this, you know, with the current administration, they're back in the fossil fuels or hybrids versus electrical. And if they went another four years, who knows? You know, they're, you're probably eight years out, which I'm sure they promote fossils versus the EV technologies. So I just wondered whether you took that in consideration when you were looking at these numbers.
Absolutely. That's a great question. Thank you. I'm 100%. The infrastructure being built right now, it is being built because there's a necessity for it. There's drivers out there buying electric vehicles because of their commitment to sustainability or for whatever reasons they may have, their own personal reasons. But regardless, electric vehicles have been increasing year and over, and the charging stations haven't been able to keep up with the amount of infrastructure. With that, more drivers buying just means there's going to be more charging stations needed and trying to provide the amenity to individuals. You're not necessarily reselling power, you're providing just an experience that's going to enable people to electrify, and it's often seen as a commitment to sustainability and appreciated by a lot of individuals who are looking to reduce their carbon footprint.
Okay, back to maybe a balance sheet. If, how long are you going to give this thing before you figure it's going to be profitable? I mean, if it's, say, in five years, you think, no, this isn't going to work in the Caldwell area, what happens then? You just take them out, or what?
It's still no loss to the city, because we're ultimately paying the city for the parking spaces. So the city has, there's no loss. We would still be paying for those. Our commitment is to have the 10-year commitment that we would then put in, and those would be operating at that point after the 10 years, if you decided to continue the agreement. We could ultimately, or whatever the term, I'm using 10 years as hypothetical figure, we could ultimately agree on whatever that term is. But our standard is 10 years, and at that point, based on that, we could then look to continue forward if we desire to. We've seen infrastructure growth at every single site, and we've seen the demands for scalability increase at every single site. So with that, we're, it's one of those if you build it, it'll come type situations that they definitely will.
Okay, and second last question on the solar part of it. In agriculture, we look, we always look at growing degree days. In the wintertime, we don't, a lot of times they don't have a lot of sunlight, so is that going to affect your operation, or is that solar just kind of a secondary deal on this?
Yeah, solar primarily feeds the low voltage items such as the camera. They have auxiliary battery packs and uninterrupted, uninterruptible power sources as well. So it would just be primarily for low-level lifting. We could essentially, if the site got bigger and needed to have battery storage on it, we could ultimately put battery storage on the site, which the solar would then supplement and store throughout the evening, or how many other days it would need. Combined battery storage and utility power would put you in a situation where you should be able to charge, you know, pretty good for a very long time.
Okay.
Especially if utility power is available.
And as far as your agreement with the utility companies, you folks get billed direct, or does that go through our finance department? How does that work? Billing for, you know, electricity that you use for the units?
Yeah, we would have our own agreement with the utility. We would drop a new line of service, so it wouldn't, it wouldn't be interfering with any of the city's infrastructure, other than we would basically work with the utility to have our own interconnect, so we would not be needing any of the city's infrastructure. We would drop our own power, and we use our own infrastructure for communications as well, so we use cellular networks when we use. So it would be no impedance to the city's infrastructure.
Okay, as far as service is concerned, you'll have a service person in each one of these locations, or how does that work?
Yeah, we have our service level agreement with UpTime, and UpTime is our service level provider. They would be able to provide onsite individuals as needed, and we have an onsite management. They have a, it's called a NOC, which is a network system that basically monitors all the charging stations, and they can typically predict when the station's about to fail or has failed due to vandalism or malfunction, and can get somebody outside. I'd have to check and see what their response time is, but I typically think that it's within 48 hours, is our typical standard agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Register?
Thank you. Just real quick. So I did do some research before this, and there's, I mean, just kind of random internet research, but it did come back saying that there were 8,500 vehicles in the state of Idaho right now that were EVs out of the 2 million people that live here. So my question, it seems to me that this would be more used for people visiting or passing through, and none of those sites seem to be anywhere close to the freeway. These people, they would have to come off and drive through the town to get to wherever it was they were going. And I'm also not super interested in taking parking spaces away from the places in our downtown, like I don't remember all of the places, but the airport doesn't have a ton of parking, the fair or that area. So if they were passing through places that were closer to the freeway, that might make more sense, but I'm not sure it makes sense for Caldwell in general. So I just wanted to, that was it.
Thank you. I appreciate that feedback. We could definitely look at alternate suggestions. If you guys have better sites that you feel would be more suitable for it, we can absolutely look at it. This was just our early analysis and a few of the sites that we deemed based on historical data and some other sites that we've done with other cities. We're actually just finishing up a airport at the city of Chicago. So it has been a lot of continuity there.
Okay, very good. I don't see any other questions, so thank you so much. Appreciate you taking the time to be with us this evening, and it looks like we do have a few more questions that'll kind of go through the works and bring you back for, in the future, to kind of go through those. So we appreciate the time very much.
Awesome. Thank you. Have a great night.
Hey, thank you, you too. Appreciate it. Okay, so that is our first workshop. Our next one is for the University of Idaho Extension, the Senior Produce Program. I don't know if we're just going to jump right into, I think we will, come on up. So I believe all the council members are familiar with this program that happens every summer, so if you don't mind, just kind of remind us your name, and then we'll give it over to you.
Members of council, Mayor, appreciate the opportunity to share a little bit about the Senior Produce Program Annual Report. My name is Daniel Adams. I'm a health education specialist at Southwest District Health, and I have the privilege of facilitating the Caldwell Health Coalition. Next slide, please. So most of you are familiar, but I do want to just do a quick refresher. So the Senior Produce Program provides vouchers to eligible seniors 16 and over at the market each week throughout the market season. The program is in, was, this was the fifth year that we did the program. It's our biggest and longest standing program that we do with the Caldwell Health Coalition. And really, the purpose and goal of the program is to provide access to fresh fruits and vegetables, to get our, give an opportunity for our seniors to get out, socialize, and then really to support our local farmers. Next slide, please. So the primary coordination for the program is done by Southwest District Health and the University of Idaho Extension, but we also have other partners that help support the program. Wouldn't be able to do it without the support and partnership of Destination Caldwell and their market staff, but also our funders, which this year included the city of Caldwell, the American Heart Association, Southwest District Health, the Idaho Food Bank, St. Luke's, University of Idaho Extension, again, was a coordinating partner, and then Select Health was also one of our funders. Next slide, please. So a snapshot of the program for this year, we did go from July 15th through September 30th, so that was really to be more in alignment with the availability of produce. We did increase the amount of those vouchers, so just recognizing that costs have increased and just being able to provide a little bit more there. And with the increase in funding that we had, so last year we had $10,000 in funding, we were able to get that funding back up to $15,000, just under $15,000 for those vouchers. And so we were able to support 342 households throughout the market season and really had a really high redemption rate, as you can see there. It's the highest redemption rate that we've had in the five years that we've been doing the program. Next slide, please. So in terms of our participants, we had 105 of those on average that returned each week, so really highly engaged participation there, and averaged about 15 or 20 new participants each week. We had an increase in Caldwell residents that were participating in the program, and overall, 90% were within Canyon County, so we really know that we're supporting the local community there with our participants. That number of those that are age 75 and older stayed about the same from last year, as well as the number of Hispanic participants. So we continue to try to increase the, that participant, participation rate, so that it's more representative of the population. And something else of note, so when participants are new at the beginning of the market season, we ask a few questions, one of those being how they get to the market. And as you can see there, 20% are getting a ride from someone's. We know that oftentimes, transportation can be an issue for older adults, so just something for us to keep in mind going forward. Next slide, please. So our volunteers, this year we had 36 total volunteers, and something that we tried to get back to this year was providing opportunities for youth to volunteer with the program, just recognizing that intergenerational connection. Those vouchers, if you were at the market at all this year, they go really quickly. So the average time that our volunteers are there decreased, but that was really just because of the popularity of the program. Next slide, please. So something that we did last year was we had the University of Idaho Extension Master Gardeners Group that set up a backyard gardener's booth, so really, folks that were connected with that group were able to donate produce. Participants could use their vouchers at that booth each week, and they also accept, accepted cash donations. We saw a stark increase in the number of donations for that program, so just over 3,000 pounds of produce. Just under $1,500 was able to be reinvested back into the program, so those vouchers that are spent there just roll back into the program. And it really increased the variety of produce that was available at the markets each week. So we work in close coordination with Destination Caldwell to make sure that we're not, you know, encroaching on any of the vendors that are there each week. And we did see an increase in the number of vendors that were at the market this year. And then you see there on the bottom that that booth did result in those participants purchasing and increasing their consumption of fruits and vegetables. Next slide, please. So the bigger picture, just recognizing that the impact of this program really is holistic, so it's not just that we're providing that fresh produce, but we're also providing that opportunity for folks to get out, to walk the market. Some mentioned that they actually walked to the market, so just emphasizing in the infrastructure for that. And then the financial stability that that provides for a lot of our participants, recognizing that they're on a fixed income, and then that helps to reduce their reliance on some of those emergency food systems. Next slide, please. And I'll just reemphasize that social connection that it provides, but then also just thinking about the, the culture of service that I think exists in Caldwell and providing opportunities for volunteers to connect with the program, but then just showing that Caldwell cares and is trying to include the, our seniors in, in the community with the program. Next slide, please. So looking ahead to 2026, each year we kind of reset with, we expend all of those funds, so we're, we go back and we look at opportunities to either sustain those existing partnerships with our funders, or also looking at, you notice that we had more funders that were helping to support the program this year. We'll look at doing that again next year, particularly considering that we had a high participation rate. We had to turn a lot of people away, unfortunately. Those vouchers go really quickly, and this is just looking for opportunities to increase the number of partnerships that we have with our sponsors and volunteers. Next slide, please. With that, I just thank you for your support of this program. It's really a privilege for us to be able to coordinate the program. It does get a lot of feedback from our participants on how much it means to them and the ability that it provides for them to, to socialize, to increase that access to those fresh fruits and vegetables. And then I just extend an invitation for the Caldwell Health Coalition. We have a lot of different organizations, agencies, nonprofits, community members that are already part of that group, but our meetings are open to anyone that'd like to participate. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Perfect. Thanks so much, Daniel. Appreciate that. Any questions? Counselor Stotick?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I'm looking at your veggie basket here, and I don't see any spuds there. Do you have spuds?
It's really just depending on, you know, what vendors bring to the market each week, and then for those, those donations that we get from the backyard gardener's booth, so I, as far as that goes, I will, something I did fail to mention earlier, so with the produce that's left over each week, you notice that we had a stark increase in the number of, the amount of produce that was donated. If anything was left over each week, that was donated to organizations that could, that were also supporting food access. So Community Council Idaho, we took some over to the Veterans Hall, to the food pantry at Wilson Elementary, so we'd welcome any potatoes if anybody's got them.
Well, last year when you presented, I asked you to contact the Idaho Potato Commission. Has anybody done that? Sorry?
To my knowledge, no, but if you have a direct contact there, introductions are always appreciated, and it helps us to make those connections better.
Potato acreage, looks like they're going to be up this year, so prices are going to be down. That's just why I asked, so you could probably get them pretty cheap, or they probably donate them to you, so.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Might even talk, be able to talk Counselor Stotick into bringing some potatoes down there to, to put in the baskets.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any other questions? Okay, so thank you so much. This is a great program, and it helps, as you mentioned, in so many ways, just nutrition, exercise, the social aspect. It's a great program, so excited for the city to be a part of it. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Okay, so that is all of our workshops for the evening, so we've got a few minutes, so we'll go ahead and adjourn at this time, and we'll be back at 6:00 PM for our regularly scheduled city council meeting.